This may be surprising, but we will begin with the pledge offered by Councilmember White, since we are now moving ahead one in the rotation. So, Councilmember White, if you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Good evening and welcome to the October 19th, 2020 study session of the Livonia City Council. Excuse me, this meeting sets the agenda for the 1,908th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, the day after the election. All members of council, with the exception of Councilmember Tore with us, she's under the weather, we hope she feels better soon. I don't believe that we have any special groups in the audience. I would like to announce that we have new data on item number two. And when we get to that item, I will refer specifically to the new data. Does anyone from the council have any announcements that they would like to make? I see a hand up. Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. Maybe not necessarily an announcement, however, right as the meeting was ending, Councilman Barr made a comment about the libraries and what their future status is going to be. And funny enough, a resident reached out and said that her library card had expired this last couple of days, and she's not sure what to do. So there are residents out there that are watching and are anxious to get back to our libraries. So I'm looking forward to some updates per Councilman Barr's earlier requests. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Donovan. After no other announcements from council, we will move on to audience communication. If anyone from the audience would like to communicate with council on any item not on this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. All right, I see none. So we will move ahead. This is a study meeting, there will be no votes taken at this meeting. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's study meeting agenda will move on to the regular meeting on Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, at which time it will be officially voted upon. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please use the raise hand button or press number nine on your phone if you're joining us only by phone when that item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is a city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. When you are called to speak, please state your name and address for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you. The minister for this meeting will also let the council members and anyone joining by Zoom or phone know who is speaking to them. And I see a hand up, and even though I didn't see one up when I called for audience communication, I will allow a call on Deana Hallis in the event that she wished to speak during audience communication. Get her hand up quickly. Good evening, Ms. Hallis, did you wish to speak during audience communication?
Hi, yes, thank you. I didn't know that I didn't hit raise hand right away. My name is Deana Hallis. I live next to the Planned Parenthood on Rayburn Street. The last time that we had joined the city council meeting, you had mentioned that hopefully by the next city council meeting, we'll have some sort of, you know, resolution or anything really to kind of figure out what's going on with what ordinances that they should be following there with the noise and the signage. So I was just wondering if anything has happened with that.
I'll refer, I'll defer to Mr. Burnier. I do know that, I do know that there was a traffic commission meeting and some remedies proposed regarding letting parking, but those were not approved by the traffic commission. So I think they're perhaps back to the drawing board. I don't know if there are any other updates. I'll ask Mr. Burnier, our city attorney.
Well, I hesitate to talk about anything we have on paper or any, anything that I'm investigating or looking at, except for the fact that I know Ms. Councilmember Jolly asked a while back for us to do a proposal, or not a proposal as such, but a document explaining First Amendment law, basically, on what can, what is and what is not allowed. And we're in the process of preparing that. First Amendment law obviously is a touchy situation, and unfortunately, this is a very touchy area, both physically for the location of the Planned Parenthood to the neighborhood and the issues of protests. We clearly do not want to infringe upon somebody's right to protest, yet we are very sensitive to the neighbors who are living with the protests, whose children are trying to be home schooled and whose parents are trying to do work from home. So we understand that there's a tough balancing act, and we are trying to look at it from all sides and put together the best possible proposal. We're not there yet.
Okay. I just, I wanted to make it clear, though, that I don't think any regarding me or any of the neighbors down Rayburn Street have an issue with them protesting. We understand that everybody has the right to protest and they have every right to be there, but there's also, you know, some laws there with how loud and the yelling and the bullhorns and the physical horns, you know, that I don't necessarily think is protesting when they're screaming, you know, and not necessarily just walking up and down the street with signs, which none of us have an issue with that. It's just regarding the noise that comes from it.
Understood. You know, I guess the only remedy I can offer, and Mr. Burnier, I'll ask you if this is correct, is when you believe that the ordinances are being broken, is to call the police department.
Well, that's correct. Our police, I know our police department has been out there many, many occasions. I've driven by there many times, I've seen it, I've talked to the police department, police officers on many occasions. And our police department does respond to the calls, and I think the resident will tell you that we are out there quite a bit. It is a tough situation in that most of the time when the police show up, probably the noise goes down, unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately. Quite frankly, we can't sit a police officer out there all day long to make sure. It would be nice if the protesters who have every right to protest would be a little, a little more compassionate towards the neighbors, but we, at this point in time, we don't believe we're in the situation to force manners upon people. And so we are looking at it to determine reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. I'm not sure we'd be able to satisfy everybody, or quite frankly, anybody in this matter, but we are looking at it to see what can or can't be done. I don't want to just speak off the cuff and say what we're going to do, because I don't want to give anybody on either side the wrong impression.
Thank you, Mr. Burnier. And also, I received a, I received a message from our city engineer, letting me know that the item was actually not defeated, or the, the item was tabled in traffic commission. There was no vote, and I think that was due to some, you know, dissension that everyone was not on the same page with that item. All right, thank you, Ms. Hallis.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. With that, we will move ahead with our, oh, okay, let me go back. Let's see, we have last four digits of 17, phone number 1720. If you could please give us your name and address. Trying to get you unmuted. Are you able, there we go. Good evening. Oh, muted again. Are you able to unmute? Hello?
Yes, I called in since, hello. I called in so it would be easier, since you didn't like me using the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to also touch on the protest.
Would you like to identify yourself, please?
Yes, Katie Rogowitz, I live in Braho, right behind the Planned Parenthood.
All right.
Yeah, and I did also hear about the city looking into putting no parking signs. We have a serious issue with parking with the Stevenson High School parents at the entrance of Frankavilla and Burton Hollow on Sixth Mile, and there are currently no parking, no stopping, no standing signs there. But we've called the police before, and they do not send anyone out and to address it. We've called the school before, they do not address it either. So it seems pretty suspect for them to entertain ideas of putting parking signs out there to circumvent people's free speech, because Livonia Police don't currently enforce parking in the neighborhoods when they're in violation. People parking in front of fire hydrants, parking their RVs and their campers in the street, trailers, happens in our neighborhood. I have three commercial trucks on my street alone that park overnight in the street, which is a violation of city ordinance. So are the police just going to pick and choose which no parking and city ordinances they're going to enforce to try to silence free speech, because that would probably be a serious problem? I'm sure Mr. Burnier would probably agree with that.
All right, anything else, Ms. Rogowitz?
Yes, again, touching on Chief Cade withholding the evidence of implicating his officers and his Department of Racist Rhetoric. Those text messages do exist. I'm not sure why he tells the mayor's office that they're fake. I would be willing to produce them to city council and the mayor's office, but I, apparently nobody wants to look at them. And if I can't make a complaint, and I can't go to the mayor's office, and I can't go to city council, and the police won't take my complaint, how does it get addressed then? Because I'm not going to go away. You know, we have a Livonia police officer currently, Brendan Adams, who says to people that they cannot show an electronic proof of insurance. So are they just doing it to me, or are they doing it to other residents?
Excuse me, you know, we're asking that, that people not be, you know, attacked personally or their character or anything else called a question personally. So I'd ask you to perhaps refer to them as police officers, not by name. Are you able to unmute yourself? There we go.
Yes. Well, I'm just wondering, what's my recourse as a resident if nobody will take the complaint? Because the court, the court doesn't handle what police officers don't do properly at their job. If they're telling residents that they don't accept an electronic proof of insurance in violation of state law, the court doesn't handle that. And that's what Brandon McCullough told me was the response from the police department, that the court does not handle police officers that don't know the law. That would be something that Chief Cade would have to address, but they, they are refusing to take that complaint.
Well, as I've explained to, and I'm sorry it's not satisfactory, that Chief Cade works for the mayor, so the mayor's office is, we do not have jurisdiction over Chief, Chief Cade or the police department, so all I can do is refer you to the mayor's office, Ms. Rogowitz.
But the mayor's office won't speak with me.
Well, I'm sorry, I, you know, the mayor.
And John Hiller said that there is an MCL that states that you guys can conduct an investigation, that you guys can trigger an investigation. But you guys won't. Why? Because I can't be the only person that Livonia Police told that we do not accept an electronic proof of insurance. And if police officers aren't properly trained and they're out there writing tickets for stuff in violation of state law, that seems to be something that would have to be addressed.
Anything else?
I just figured it, I know Chief Cade listens to these meetings. If you think that I'm lying, take a polygraph, let's see who's lying. Because I'm willing to take one. Stop lying. Citizens deserve better. I'm withholding my citizen complaint about racism from your transparency tab. Can't select which citizen complaints you're not going to release to the public.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rogowitz. And next we move on to Laura Franklin. Good evening, Ms. Franklin. Let's see, somehow, I, some, let's see, somehow it went unmuted again after I just saw that you were, are you able to unmute yourself?
Let me speak, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Great, great. I wanted to bring up a question in the study group dealing with the petition 2007, oh, one oh four, as being submitted by Adams Park Development. Would this be the right place? To address some issues?
The petition, the petition brought up by?
Adams Park Development LLC.
The Middle Belt Ranchers LLC.
This one is for on Linden Street, the former Adams Elementary School site.
You can address us, that is not on this evening's agenda, but you're, you may address the council, you can address the council on any issue that's not on this evening's agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you so very much. My questions are as follows. I attended the meeting, and I understand that things are being changed in terms of zoning. Is it possible to also deal with the need for a study dealing with the sewer system and the utilities? Because my home is butted up against all the sewer water. I'm on the main drain, and on the drawings, there is nothing that indicates how the LLC is going to hook up to, and there's nothing that has been said about when was the last time the drains were surveyed or studied? The builder said that the sewer system and the water system can take X, Y, and Z, but I was wondering, is there any way to provide proof of that? And also to show how they're going to connect to already existing utilities?
Madam President?
Yes, please, Councilmember.
If I may, kind of jump into the ladies' concerns here. Ma'am, the Adams site, off the top of my head here, we're very early in that process as to whether or not it will be rezoned, and if it is rezoned, or if we continue to go down the path of it being rezoned, what the site development will actually be. All, well, most, at least most of the things that you're bringing up here today would be included in an engineering study, such as the water drainage and how the newly proposed homes would kind of tap into the sewage and stuff like that. So it's very early in the process, and we don't have that information now either, but it is something that would be explored and something that we would have the ability to ask questions about as the process continued. And I would just tell you to kind of stay in tune to those meetings that are coming up here as the plan is continually talked about and the process moves forward, if it does in fact do so. That make sense?
Yes, it does. I wanted to know, how do I stay connected to know when those meetings are occurring?
Well, so I think, Madam President, if I may?
Please, go ahead.
So I think you would have to, first and foremost, probably keep an eye out for agenda items that are posted on the city website in regards to the meetings that are before us here as a city council. Maybe also the Planning Commission might be involved in that. I think if you call up the city council office, they may be able to take your phone number and your information, and may be able to give you a heads up there in regards to these items coming up as well. I don't want to promise something that somebody else may do. I don't know if they're able to do that or not, but they might be able to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes?
I'd like to suggest that you go on the city website, and I believe that you're able to subscribe to the agendas and have them sent to you, to your email before the meeting. I believe that's correct. So I think that's an excellent way to stay apprised, and I believe you can, you can do that. All right?
Okay.
Okay, but thank you very much for taking the time to call in. And Mr. Jolly was absolutely correct in everything he said where we are in the. But this will be going back to the Planning Commission, okay? All right, last chance for audience communication. One, two, three. All right, we are moving ahead then with our new business. Beginning with the block party, this comes to us from Katie Adams, to be held Saturday, November 21st, 2020, from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. on Dover Street between Perrin and Heath with no rain date requested. Ms. Adams, are you just with us? Okay, I don't see the petitioner is with us, council.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
If I may, I would offer this for approving on the regular agenda as to allow the petitioner an opportunity to come back before us.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item number two. This is a request to select and approve two representatives to the Michigan Municipal Services Authority, MMSA. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor, from the nominations of Kathleen Lamaco and Jim Jolly and Brandon McCullough to serve as Livonia's representatives on the authorities' board. And we do have new data, and this was submitted to council, and it is the resume CV of Ms. Lamaco, who is the executive director, I believe soon to be retiring, of a SMC, Southeastern Michigan Council.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to offer an approving resolution of the other two individuals who are being nominated, Ms. Lamaco and Mr. McCullough. Although it is an honor to be kind of mentioned in regards to representing the city in any capacity, my responsibilities as a father, a husband, a city councilman, and also serving on the pension board, I don't have any more bandwidth to provide. And I do believe that Mr. McCullough and Ms. Lamaco are excellent candidates and would do a very good job. Thank you.
So would you like to offer that for approving or for consent?
I think it's appropriate for consent, but it's up to my colleagues, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, Mr. Jolly has offered the appointments of Kathleen Lamaco and Councilmember Brandon McCullough to serve as Livonia's representative on the Michigan Municipal Services Authority Board, and that will go on the, that will go on the consent agenda. All right, item number three, request for authorization to purchase one 2021 Ford F-150 four by four super cab XLT pickup truck through the state of Michigan bid process. This comes to us from the Public Service Division to replace vehicles used by the, from budgeted funds. Mr. Roroff, are you taking this issue?
I am, good evening, council.
Good evening.
As you mentioned, we are looking to purchase a pickup truck through the state bid from budgeted funds. The state bid does meet the city's purchasing ordinance. The state bid for the truck that shares a work to Signature Ford, and the upfitting was awarded to Versalift Midwest. This truck will not be increasing our fleet, it will be replacing a truck that will be disposed of through the mitten auction process, and it is the recommendation of the department that council authorized the purchase of the pickup truck totaling $32,192 from Signature Ford, and also authorized the upfitting of the truck from Versalift in the amount of $12,369. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this item.
Council? Yes, Councilmember White.
I don't have any questions. I'm prepared to offer an approving resolution for consent if there's no objection.
All right, seeing no objections, we'll put that on consent. Thank you, Councilmember White, thank you, Mr. Roroff. Item number four is a request to authorize expenditure. This comes to the Public Service Division to enable payment to Wolverine Commercial Furnishings for the emergency installation of citywide COVID screening and shield within all city-owned facilities to complete the safety concerns with reopening of city buildings. Mr. Roroff?
Thank you. Before you tonight is the final payment for the emergency installation, as you mentioned, of the sneeze shields and barriers that were installed throughout all of the city buildings as required by the state of Michigan for reopening. We did solicit bids on mitten in May for this work. We received five bids, and we accepted the low bidder Wolverine Commercial Furnishings to perform all of the work that's associated with the installation of all the so mentioned. I would be happy to answer questions about this. As you recall, earlier, we came to you with the glass petitions for the clerk's office, treasurer's office, and senator's office, but it is the recommendation of the department that council authorized payment to Wolverine Commercial Furnishings in a total of $25,400 for the sneeze shields and barriers that were installed.
Thank you, Mr. Roroff, council. Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd be happy to offer an approving resolution for consent if there's no objections. This is something that I've had to do myself and for the department to actually go out on mitten, solicit bids in the middle of COVID, and, and looking at the number very competitively. It's kudos to the Department of Public Works on this one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there seeing no objections? I don't, I think we have no objections. So place that on.
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President Barr?
No objection necessarily, but, and by the way, my computer's about to go dead, I'm going to have to plug it in, but if it goes dead while I'm talking, you'll know why. The only thing I wanted to ask was, in our packets, the letter that was submitted for this always has a section to be signed by the finance director to say funds are available and approved by the mayor. Neither of those signatures are included here. Don, is there a reason for that, or is that just an oversight?
I believe on the packet, it's on the backside of page one, but there's both signatures that are there on my packet.
That's what I'm looking at right now, and what, do you know, do you know what funds these are, what fund in the budget this is coming out of?
It's coming out of building maintenance.
Okay. All right, well, I just, it just caught my attention that we didn't have either one of those signatures, so I assume we'll have them by the time we build on this in a couple weeks. Thanks.
I'll double check that, but as I said, my copy that I'm looking at has that, so I will make sure maybe something got sent your way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, but Mr. Barr, you're okay with signing?
We can proceed, I assume the paperwork will be in order. I just wanted to point it out, those are.
Oh, thank you, that's a good catch.
Madam President, I'm going to go off video just for a minute here while I get my computer closer to an outlet, and I'll be back.
Okay, all right, thank you. Item number five is an audit report. This comes to us from Livonia Housing Commission for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019, excluding Silver Village, Newburgh Village, the Community Development Black Grant Program, and single-family city-owned properties. Good evening, Ms. Isaacson.
Good evening, council. Can you guys hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay, I'm just here to present the Livonia Housing Commission's audit report for 2019. As you mentioned, this does not include Silver Village, Newburgh Village, or the Community Development Black Grant Program. Those programs are covered under the city's plan and review on audit. This just strictly audits our public housing and Section 8 programs. We had no findings. That's really all I have to present, so.
All right. Do we need to, we need to approve this, right? This requires an approval?
No, it's just a receive and file.
File, thank you, sorry, I wasn't sure, and I didn't see, I couldn't remember, but last week I made a mistake on something that did need, that needed action, anyway. Thank you. Item number, receiving file. Item number, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Donovan.
It's okay, thanks, Madam President. Ms. Isaacson, I had a question, and I was going over the packet. When it talks about, for instance, single-family homes, out of curiosity, how many single-family homes does the city of Livonia own, and what are we doing with those exactly? You're on mute.
Let's see, do we? Randy, are you there?
Yeah, the host has to unmute me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, okay, the host is unmuted, you.
Okay, I'm unmuted. So the city of Livonia owns 13 houses, and the Livonia Housing Commission owns 15, so total of 28 houses. And the 15 that are operated under the Livonia Housing Commission are public housing, which means that the occupants only pay 30% of the market rent, and the balance is subsidized by. only pay 30% of the market rent, and the balance is subsidized by HUD. And the 13 that are operated under the community development program, their rents are just set at low flat rents. And to give you an example, the three-bedroom is $710, and we rent those to low-income families. So that typically, some families don't necessarily need a subsidy. They just, they're at a, what we call like a more of a moderate income limit. So, requiring them to pay 30% of their income might be $800 a month, when market rent might be $1,200. So this kind of makes it a little bit more affordable to them.
Okay, thank you. And then who's paying, who's responsible for the property taxes of those properties, those 28 properties, I think you said?
So, we don't pay property taxes. We participate in the pilot program, where we pay service fee in lieu of property taxes. So we actually pay a percentage from the rents that are collected.
Okay, and how are these homes identified? Are we, as a city, finding blighted homes rather than, that are foreclosed, or why not just sell them and try to capitalize on those sorts of property taxes?
Um, so, the public housing houses, I will be honest, that has been a conversation that we've talked about over the last couple of years, because the physical needs of the properties are very difficult to maintain. I would say on average, every time we turn a house around or somebody vacate, it could cost us anywhere between $10,000 and $15,000 just to make it ready for a new occupant. So, we are looking at other options to provide affordable housing to families that takes us out of the landlord business. So.
That's where I was kind of getting at, when the city's on the hook for these homes, not only from a liability standpoint, but now we're talking about being on the hook for the cost of these homes and those costs that incurred during having a residence or tenant, and then after we're getting a new tenant. So, just some things I was curious about. So, thank you, Randy. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, councilmember. Thank you, Randy. Anyone else? All right, with that, we'll move on to item number six. This is a request to execute a new three-year contract in the city of Livonia and the county of Wayne for housing rehabilitation program funding and homebuyer assistance funding, and request to authorize the Director of Housing to approve the 2021 through 2023 home contract funding. This comes to the Livonia Housing Commission. This is to extend the city's participation in the Wayne County Home Investment Partnership Consortium from July 21st, 2020 through June 30th, 2024, with an average annual allocation of $100,000 to the city of Livonia. And this is Council Resolution 168-18, Council Resolution 08 through 15, Council Resolution 397-12, Council Resolution 323-12, 196-11, and 213-09. Ms. Isaacson.
Hello again. I'm here just requesting approval to enter into a new three-year contract with the Wayne County Consortium. Back in 2012, the Wayne County Consortium was created to allow entitlement communities such as Livonia, who are not normally eligible to receive home funds, because we are considered an entitlement, and we received a direct allocation from CDBG to form a group with a county to apply for these additional funds. So, the city of Taylor and Lincoln Park, Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, with Wayne County as speed, have entered into an agreement, I would say for about the past 10 years, to apply for these additional funds to supplement our home rehabilitation program. And last year, we started the homebuyer program with these funds. So typically, annually, we get between 100 and 120,000.
Excellent. Counsel?
Madam President.
Ah, yes, Councilmember Donovan.
I'd like to offer approving on consent if there's no objection.
All right, any discussion or concern about placing the sign consent? Seeing none, we will place this on the consent agenda for the November 5th meeting. Item number seven, continuing with new business, request to execute agreement between the city of Livonia and the Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation, SMART. This comes to the Livonia Housing Commission to allow Livonia Community Transit Program to receive the FTA 5310 Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities grant in the amount of $48,522, and to authorize the city of Livonia to provide matching funds of $24,261 from budgeted funds. Ms. Isaacson.
I'm here just to request approval to receive the grant through the SMART program. This will supplement our operating expenses specifically for the RouteMatch. And RouteMatch, for those that aren't familiar, RouteMatch is a software program that we utilize in the Transportation Department to track and maintain riders on our buses. So typically, it's about $42,000 to $45,000 annually to maintain the software. We have about 18 buses on our Livonia Community Transit. We are going to be adding our scan buses and the medical buses to this software, so the costs are going to increase a little bit. So, this grant will be going towards operations.
Thank you. Counsel? Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I'll offer an approving for the consent agenda. I know that this is the first time that you're coming before us for this, I believe, correct?
Correct.
This is what your newfound responsibilities with the transit. We wish you well. No, you and your people will do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's been offered on the consent agenda. Item number eight is request for additional expenditure. This comes to us from the Engineering Department to authorize a budget transfer of $75,020 from Contract 20-8, 2020 asphalt repair program to Contract 20J concrete road maintenance for the additional work necessary in Section 19 clause of the contract with L. Anthony Instruction Incorporated. This is Council Resolution 10-20.
Madam President, city councilmembers, as you're aware, we've been doing work the last couple of years south of Five Mile, west of Newburgh Road, in order to repair some of the concrete slabs in that area. Last year, L. Anthony had the contract. We extended the contract to him for $825,000. When he was doing the roadwork this year, we invited some areas in his location where he had set up off of Linden to address recently planted trees where some of the slabs have been tilted up to remove those for snow plowing. In addition, at the corners where catch stations have issues, so we get the water to those corners. That, work along with 24 locations where we did some removals of the trees roots to accommodate those repairs amounted to just over $75,000, and we're asking for your approval to take money that was surplus from the 28 contract to pay for these additional items. Originally had $90,000 budgeted for 20J, and came in under over the asphalt program and asking for your assistance to reallocate that money for transfer in the amount of $75,020. Thank you. Be happy to answer. Any questions if you have them?
Thank you, Mr. Lunsitt, counsel.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'll offer an approving for consent. Thank you.
All right, approving on consent offered by Councilmember Jolly. Any concerns or objections? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number nine. This is a waiver petition. This comes to the Planning Commission regarding Petition 2020-08-02-08 submitted by GMRI Incorporated to utilize an SDM liquor license sale of packaged beer and wine in connection with the operations of an existing full-service restaurant, Olive Garden, located on the east side of Middle Belt Road between Schoolcraft Road and Linden Avenue, $14,000 Middle Belt Road, and the southwest quarter of Section 40, I'm sorry, Section 24. Mr. Teramina.
Thank you. GMRI Inc. on behalf of Olive Garden is requesting an SDM license. That is a specially designated merchant's license, which would allow the restaurant to sell packaged beer and wine products. Those products would be sold either as a pick-out or pickup takeout order or by delivery. There are a couple of special requirements that apply. One is that the location of the new SDM license not be within 500 feet of an existing SDM licensed establishment. There are two such licensed establishments within that distance, Aldi, which is located immediately to the south of Olive Garden, and then the Wine Palace, which is located across Middle Belt Road, which also carries both an STD as well as an SDM license. Planning Commission reviewed this in significant detail at their meeting. Oh, excuse me, the other requirement is that the establishment not be within 400 feet of a school or church, which is not the case here. As I was saying, the Planning Commission reviewed this and is recommending approval of the SDM license. J. Patrick Howe from JP Howe P O L C is here representing the Olive Garden, and he can provide additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I'll go to the petitioner, Mr. J. Patrick Howe. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Patrick Howe, on behalf of Olive Garden, requesting a waiver use to add beer and wine sales. This is simply to complement the changing circumstances we have here with increased takeout and to-go orders. Will be beer and wine offered for sale with takeout orders. There will not be a separate market or anything implemented. We went over this a great deal of tail with the Planning Commission. It's a very low percentage of sales. They have an excellent operating record as it pertains to the adjacent uses, Aldi and Wine Palace. We believe this fits a different niche, serving, you know, to-go meals with specialty wines and beers. So we appreciate your support. We have no complaints from any neighbors. We have full support of the Planning Commission, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Counsel, Mr. Donovan, Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a few questions. With the petitioner, I'll go first with you, sir. Thanks for being with us tonight. Is this the first Olive Garden location that's offering this service, or do you have other locations that are offering this? And if you do have other locations doing this, how has it been received so far?
This is a national program. I obtained SDM licenses for all of their Michigan locations. And Livonia, interestingly, is the only municipality that has a local process that requires local approval. So all the other stores are operating with beer and wine takeout. It's been very well received, and it's a growing demand. All my clients that obtain on-premise restaurant licenses, they always get a beer and wine license to go. It's the norm, and I think it's just going to grow as we have more and more delivery services such as Grubhub, Shipt, et cetera. I think this is a growing trend.
Thank you. While I'm one for less regulation, I am proud to say that the city of Livonia does do their due diligence with certain matters like this. I would say that this may be unique, but with today's times and businesses being open-minded and innovative to new ideas, I think this is something that does make sense. I do have one more question from Mr. Teramina. With this SDM license, is there going to be some sort of limitation on how many licenses the city will allow within the city limits, or?
Yes, so that's a great question. So, SDM licenses are now quota restricted, and it's based on population. And so Livonia, by quota, is allowed a total of 97 licenses. That's based on a ratio of one license for every thousand population. The city currently has about 81 or 82 active licenses, but here's the catch. A restaurant like this, a carrier of a Class C license like the Olive Garden, if they obtain an SDM, it doesn't count against the quota. So, we have about 81 active licenses, as I indicated. However, of the quota limit, there are only about 62 that have been issued. So our quota limit, we're well below the quota limit. There's about 35 out there to be, that could be issued. When you look at the number of active licenses, there are probably about 20 of them that fall into this category of non-retail. So, there are many restaurants here in the city of Livonia that have obtained or acquired a license from the Michigan Liquor Control Mission. They are classified as active by the MLCC. However, they don't have their zoning approval. There's only a small handful of restaurants that have bothered to go through this process to obtain zoning approval. So, both the law department, the detective bureau, and the police department, as well as myself, we notify, whenever we see these things being issued by the MLCC, we notify the restaurants to advise them that they have to go through this waiver approval process. Olive Garden is just the only one in recent months that has done that. So, I hope that answers your question. It was kind of a long answer to a seemingly simple question.
Thank you, Mr. Teramina. My final question, I'm sorry. Does the petitioner have to go through some additional process with the MLCC, or just?
They've already done that. They've obtained their license, as many restaurants have. Whether or not they're actually selling SDM products to go, we don't know. We advise them that they have to go through this process because it is a zoning requirement, but they can obtain that license from the MLCC without local legislative approval. I think that's accurate. Mr. Howe?
We have approval, but this approval, like all state approvals, is going to have the proviso that says this approval is subject to full compliance with any local laws and ordinances. And insofar as we don't have local approval, we are not utilizing that SDM license at this location yet. So that's where we stand.
Thank you, Mr. Teramina, and Mr. Howe.
Councilmember McCullough.
Madam President, through the chair of the House to Mr. Toramina, do we have comparable restaurants that have went this approach that is currently selling using this license?
You know, the ones that have actually received our approval, you know, some of these have had them just for decades, like the Winter Garden Tavern, has had a, has carried an SDM license for as long as I have been here. I believe there's only maybe one or two more. And how much they actually conduct in sales related to this, I don't know. Apparently, Olive Garden and Mr. Howe can verify this. You know, they don't amount to less than 2% of their gross sales. So, no, I don't, I'm not aware of any restaurants that actively sell beer and wine products to go.
And then my next question, through the chair to the petitioner, Mr. Howe. As I was kind of reading the packet, I mean, your business approach to this is more from a takeout, obviously pairing with some of the dishes to, say, a wine or a beer. Is that correct?
Yeah, truly a takeout addition. So, you call up or go online in order to family meal or something. It can come with a bottle of wine. Or if you enjoy a meal on-site and say, really like to take one of those home for tomorrow night, you have the ability to do that. It's really just their takeout offerings, and then the ability to sell the beer and wine that they're offering on-premise to go. So it's less than 1% of their sales, and very, very low volume here.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Counsel, do I have a question?
Madam President.
I'm sorry, Mr. Councilmember Donovan, Councilmember White had her hand up.
I was going to offer the approving on consent if there's no objection. The idea that we really need to help these restaurants survive, even if it's 1% of their sales, especially going into the winter season. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Councilmember White has offered this on consent. If no one objects, then we'll place it on the consent agenda. Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Mr. Howe. And we, you know, thank you for doing business in Livonia, and thanking for, thank you for working to keep your Livonia business healthy. I know Olive Garden is a favorite of many, many people, so.
It's always a pleasure working with Mark and his staff. Thank you.
It is a pleasure always working with Mark, Toramina, Teramina. That's. That's absolutely true. All right. If no one has anything else, then we are adjourned at 9:35. Good night, Livonia. Thank you, Livonia TV. Thank you, Casey, and thank everyone, our petitioners, our audience. Oh.
Audience communication.
Oh, thank you. Audience communication. We go back to audiences. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the council who did not do so at the beginning of this study meeting, now is an opportunity to do so. Now we'll count to three. One, two, three. All right. We are adjourned. Good night, Livonia. Thank you.